We will begin with this evening's meeting with our invocation from Tara Painter. She is with Children's Services, and I'll let her expand on that as she would like, and then we will go with our invocation. Please proceed. Oh, by the way, anybody speaking, please make sure to push the button. The green light is on. Speak directly in the microphone, and please identify yourself for the audio recording.
All right, Tara Painter, President of the Children's Ministry in the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. Our dear Heavenly Father, we are grateful for the basic needs of life and for the freedoms that we each enjoy. We thank Thee for Thy Son, Jesus Christ, and the example that He has set to love and care for others. We know His life was spent in service. Bless us as we try to emulate this in our own lives. Heavenly Father, please bless the leaders in our community and in our nation to seek wisdom in the decisions that they make. We ask Thee that we might have a spirit of cooperation in this meeting, and as we travel home tonight to our family and loved ones, help us to see them as the most important people that we can love and serve in this life. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Nolte.
Here.
Commissioner Withington.
Here.
Commissioner Lawson.
Here.
Commissioner Wagner.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
With that, is there a motion for the approval of this evening's agenda? Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. Move to approve tonight's agenda.
Motion has been made for the approval of this evening's agenda. Are there any comments, questions from the commission? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Next on our agenda is public comment. Are there any members of the public who'd care to comment on any issues? Seeing none. That brings us to our consent agenda. Administrator?
The consent agenda allows the commission to act upon items considered to be routine and approved in one motion. These may include items that have been reviewed by the commission in a prior session. There will be no separate discussion unless a commissioner requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. There are three items on the consent agenda this evening. The first item is commission meeting minutes from July 26th, August 3rd, August 17th, August 24th, August 31st, September 7th, September 14th for the 5:30 PM meeting, and September 14th for the 6 PM meeting. We also have Resolution 2023-299 approving invoice payments from September 9th to September 15th for 427 invoices in the amount of $1,499 -- excuse me, $1,499.23 and 57 cents. Too big a number for me to read. And the third item we have is Resolution 2023-298 is approving a revocable event license for the 13th Annual Julia's Warriors 5K One Mile Walk in the Parks at Smithville Lake.
Is there a motion related to this evening's consent agenda? Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. Move to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Motion has been made for the approval of this evening's consent agenda. Are there any comments, questions?
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Any questions of the administrator? Seeing none. If there's a motion, Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. Move to approve 2023-300.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2023-300. Is there any further discussion, comments, or questions? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
I recuse myself.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Motion passes five in favor, one recusal.
You on this evening's regular agenda is 2023-301. Administrator?
Resolution 2023-301 is approving the 2024 insurance coverage agreement with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas City. This is to provide health insurance for employees of the county. We presented to the commission last week information about the renewal, and Director Callahan is here along with our representative from CBIZ, happy to answer any additional questions the commission may have.
Kim Callahan, HR Director, and like she said, I'm here to answer any questions you might have. Oh, and Matt Krul is here from CBIZ also.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Before you this evening is a discussion item to talk about revisions and updates to the Land Development Code. And Director Jones is here to provide an overview of those changes and the process that has occurred so far to date.
Kip Jones, Planning Director. So this is a discussion item for the Land Development Code amendments. We have discussed this in front of County Commission a couple times before, but we're bringing this before the commission today because the Planning and Zoning Commission has voted to recommend approval on these amendments. So our plan is to kind of give you a high-level overview of what the changes include, allow any questions, and then with the purpose of bringing this back before the board for a vote at some point. So the purpose of this Land Development Code amendment is to align the Land Development Code with the state statute. So you know that there's been some changes to the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Board of Zoning Adjustment because we're following the statutes for the first-class counties. Those statutes also allow for an administrative procedure which would help streamline some of the planning and zoning processes. So we'll go over that here in a minute. And then we're also using this time to clean up certain sections of the Land Development Code just to make things a little more streamlined and a little bit easier for the citizens of Clay County. So let's talk about our current procedure. We basically have two processes. Ninety-five percent of our cases go through our normal process, which is the applicant applies with my department. That case gets forwarded to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a review and recommendation, and then it goes to County Commission for final say. Any appeal to the County Commission decision would go to the circuit court. The exception to that is if we have a development that includes infrastructure interior streets. And if it includes interior streets, then it goes through that process I just detailed twice instead of once. So it goes to two Planning and Zoning Commission meetings, two County Commission meetings, with the construction plans being reviewed in the middle of those meetings. So that's our current process. What this amendment does is it creates a third process, which is an administrative process which allows staff to approve certain cases. And what the Planning and Zoning Commission is recommending is for subdivisions with two or fewer lots or lot line adjustments. So a lot of those easier cases that come before the Planning and Zoning Commission and County Commission, like if somebody has 40 acres and they want to subdivide five or 10-acre lots for their son or daughter to build a house, and it's just creating that one additional lot, and it would meet all of the Land Development Code regulations and all of the comp plan guidance, then that could be approved by staff without having a public meeting. Now, we would still notify adjacent property owners so they know what's going on. They could make comments. We could educate them on what's happening in their area, but it would allow staff to approve that. That would basically streamline those easier cases where it's going from a three- to four-month process to maybe a five- or six-week process. And then the second process would be called a minor development, and that would include all the other cases that don't include infrastructure, so no new interior streets. So in this case, we'd be talking about if you have 40 acres and you want to divide that land into four 10-acre lots. Again, it would have to meet all the Land Development Code regulations and all the guidance in the comp plan, and then those cases would go from staff to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the Planning and Zoning Commission would have final say on those cases. So it takes out the County Commission in that process. And I would say with both of those processes, there are appeal mechanisms. So if either staff or the Planning and Zoning Commission add a condition that the applicant doesn't agree with, they can appeal that to the next body. Or if 30% of the adjacent property owners submit a petition opposing this, then it would get kicked up to that next body. So there are appeal mechanisms for both parties to continue it to the next stage. And then the third process would be a major development. That would be the interior street subdivisions. We don't get a bunch of those, but those would follow our normal process of staff review, Planning and Zoning Commission, and then County Commission. The biggest change with that process would be if County Commission approves a rezoning and preliminary plat, when it comes back for a final plat, if that final plat matches the preliminary plat, then staff can sign off on that final plat. It wouldn't require them to go back through that process a second time. So it cuts out that second set of meetings, but still requires that they go in front of Planning and Zoning Commission and County Commission once. Some additional information, this would allow conditional use permit renewals to be approved by staff. So my scenario that I use there is like Carolyn's Pumpkin Patch that's had a conditional use permit for 20-plus years. They have to renew it every so often. If they have no validated code violations and no significant changes, then it could be approved by staff. If it's a new conditional use permit, which typically we have some input from citizens, it would still go to Planning and Zoning Commission and County Commission for approval. We're proposing to change certified mail to regular mail in order to get more of those letters into adjacent property owner's hands. You'd be surprised how many people don't sign for their certified mail and never get notified. Again, we talked about the appeal processes for both the neighbors and the applicants. These amendments were heard technically at four Planning and Zoning Commission meetings, but one meeting, we had to push them because of the amount of cases we had. So it was heard at three, technically heard at three meetings with public input included. The Planning and Zoning Commission did vote six to one to recommend approval, and we did have a couple, not a whole lot of public comment, but a little bit of comment on whether we should extend our, the letters that we mail to the adjacent property owners to more than 1,000 feet. That's what it is currently. Anybody within 1,000 feet that owns property gets a letter. There was discussion whether that should be extended. Planning and zoning did not make a change there. And then there were several questions on the appeal process and how that worked. So that's a very brief overview because I think the transmittal that was submitted has roughly 71 pages. It's by far, I think, the biggest Land Development Code amendment we've done, and it wouldn't surprise me if we have to come back with some changes as we work through this, if it gets adopted, to make it perfectly right. But the feedback that staff is getting from citizens, applicants, has been overwhelmingly positive. They've wanted to streamline this for a while, and the new statutes allow us to do that. I would be happy to answer any questions the commissioners have.
Thank you. Certainly appreciate the hard work you and staff are doing on this. It's something that is overdue, and the thing is, we do want to streamline our process as much as possible, but going through the rather laborious process that you've gone through, I think increases the chances that we're not going to inadvertently put together something that is not fair to all concerned. I'm especially happy to see the fact that there are a lot of checks and balances in place from the point of view of being able, a number of entities being able to appeal a decision upline so that if someone feels like they are not being dealt with fairly, they've got an opportunity to at least have their voice heard on that particular issue. So appreciate the hard work that you've done, and certainly those on the P&amp;Z board have been working hard on this as well. Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. And I echo the hard work that you've done and the appreciation for it, Kip. One question kind of comes off of this slide. As far as, my assumption is the adjacent property owner who can make the appeal is that person who is within 1,000 feet of the applicable property. Is that?
Yes. The way the appeal's written, 30% of that list, which is 1,000 feet, would have to be part of that appeal. If they meet that 30% threshold, then that makes the appeal good, and it would go to the next board.
Got it. And then how long do they have to make that appeal?
They have seven days. So we, that's a very good question. We have seven days because we don't want to hold up the recording of the plat.
Yeah.
Too long to give them that, too long of an appeal process. And our thought is that when we send the adjacent property owner letters, we will detail that appeal process so they know when they get that letter, so it's not last minute.
Yeah.
So they have time if they know they're going to do that.
Got it. Okay. And then the other question, this may be right in line with the infrastructure issues that you brought up earlier. Are easements treated the same way, or how are easements treated in this process?
So if anybody wants to vacate an easement, it would be, it would go to Planning and Zoning Commission, and they would have, they would be the decision-maker. So if anybody was aggrieved by their decision, then they would appeal it to County Commission.
Okay.
So there would be at least a public meeting for that case.
Okay. And I guess what I was thinking about was some of the cases we've had where either a property owner has to provide an easement for a driveway, for example, to another property within the total property they started with, or if there is a utility easement of some kind, those sorts of things. Is that same way?
So if there is an egress easement provided for a landlocked piece of property.
Yeah.
If it meets the Land Development Code and the comp plan, depending on how many lots it created, if it's just a two-lot subdivision but includes an easement, then it would be a staff administrative process.
Okay.
If it was more than two lots, then it would go to Planning and Zoning Commission.
Got it. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Further discussion or comments, questions? Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you. I'm not really, yeah, I'm not picking up on anything. There we go. Very good. Thank you, Commissioner. I too want to, you know, thank you and the Planning and Zoning Commission and, you know, all of the staff who are involved in making these changes. I know it's a big detailed list of documents that you have to go through and examine, and so thank you for that. You know, other than the three years now of doing these cases as a commissioner, I obviously have no direct expertise the way you and staff folks who do this day in and day out do on this issue. And so I'm just wondering, in terms of any concerns that might potentially be out there about these changes, I do, am I correct in noting that there was one vote against the changes? I just wondered if you had anything to share in that regard in terms of any potential concerns that may have been articulated?
Yeah, so that specific member had questions about the appeal process, but that member did not feel that the Planning and Zoning Commission should be a decision-maker. So I think that was the reason for the no vote is he felt that all cases should go to County Commission. I will say, we did do some extensive research for other jurisdictions, and I think what we're proposing falls in the middle, which I think is a good thing. There are certain counties that send nothing to County Commission, and I don't agree with that because I think the County Commission should have a say in, you know, the conditional use permits, the major subdivisions, but St. Charles County does, the Planning and Zoning Commission is the decision-maker on everything. And then there's other counties that follow our old process where everything goes to County Commission. So I think this is a nice median in between the two.
Okay. Yeah, no, thank you. That's helpful. In terms of all of the changes like going from certified mail to regular mail, these are all, I assume we've checked and made sure these are all, you know, legal changes, that none of these are requirements in state statute or otherwise?
No. So we had the Assistant County Counselor go through this process with us, met with him several times, and he has approved our changes.
Yeah. Good deal. Thank you.
Just keep pushing, and it should come on. Oh, there it goes. You know, I don't mean to be unkind, but whatever in the hell we paid for this outfit here, I wish we could get them to come in and make it work properly. Jeez, we have to fight this every week. Kip, you're wonderful, as you well know, I feel, and I think the way you've set this up is commendable, and it kind of went along with what Commissioner Johnson had initially talked about, that, you know, let's do what's best for the taxpayer and how they come in and how quickly we can get them moved through this process, and I think that meets all those check marks. The only thing I'd like to consider, if we could, and I'd like your input on this, what about making that a little bit bigger than 1,000 feet out? Is there a reason for that 1,000 feet?
So, yeah, I think it could be made, you can make it whatever you want to make it. Why the 1,000 feet? I don't have a great answer for that, other than that's the way it's been. I don't have as much heartburn over expanding that area as I would have if we're not changing it to certified mail, because certified mail is $8.10 a letter. So we have, we actually have a case that's waiting to see if you adopt these because they were going to have roughly 300 certified letters to send, and that's a pretty good My only recommendation is that you give me an exact dimension. I don't want to have it be, well, if it's this type of case, you go 1,000 feet, this type of case, you go farther, or if you think it's controversial, I'd prefer it be a set distance.
Sure.
But my experience is if you make it 1,500, the guy at 1,501 is going to be upset that he didn't get a letter. So you're not going to make everybody happy.
Yeah.
But it could be extended. It's just sending more letters and notifying more people, so I don't think it's a bad thing.
Yeah. I just see how everybody else feels. You know, I think I'd like to see it go out to about 15, but that doesn't, maybe even two. And give it, you know, it depends upon what it is. You know, if it's a guy that's going to put a pig farm in, then you better give a big, wide area. But I know we got to make it one number and go for that number. So if everybody's comfortable with 1,000, that's great. If other people feel maybe we should make it a bigger number, that's fine, too. But, you know, I'd just like some other feedback, maybe come to a consensus.
I'm not sure that is the Department of Mr. Jones.
No, I can't help you there.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Withington? Oh, just keep pushing your button until it comes on. That seems to be the deal.
Okay. Hey, so I like these, I like these changes. I think they're great. One thing I would like to ask, though, is if you guys do go ahead and approve these without coming to the County Commission, is it possible to send us weekly, biweekly, monthly updates on what you guys approved, just so we have visibility into that? Because I'm sure there's some things that are going to, somebody's going to ask us a question, and if we don't know, I don't want to just send them to staff. You know, I'd like to be able to answer those questions.
Yeah, I think that would be something we do in the monthly update.
Okay.
That the county administrator sends out.
All right. Thank you.
There we go. Yay. Thank you. I just want to say thanks. This is, this is great. I like this. I'm a big believer, if we can effectively streamline government, we should, and I think this is heading the right direction. So I really appreciate that. Thank you. I'm also a big believer that we should treat our, our community members, our taxpayers as our clients and as our customers, and oftentimes, government is in a position where we're the ones that always say no. We tell them what they can't do, and then we charge them for it. And I think it really should be, it really should be, how can we help you get to where you want to get? And I think this is, this is part of going that direction. So I really appreciate that. One question I had, I know you mentioned it, and I just want to make sure that I'm clear on it, when it talks about appeals, the landowner himself, him or herself, can appeal any decision all the way up to the, to the commission, right?
Yeah. So if the applicant, the property owner, gets denied by staff or a condition gets put on that the applicant doesn't agree with, they would have 30 days to file an appeal, which would take it to the next board.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you very much. I think this is great. I appreciate your work on this.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from any other commissioners? Okay. Anybody from the public? I see no one. My understanding is what we're looking for as far as the administration goes is direction to go forward. Is that correct?
That's correct. So what it sounded like is thumbs up on all the proposals. I did hear one comment saying, is there thought of going from 1,000 feet notification to 1,500 feet of notification? Because if we could come to consensus, then our plan would be to bring that before the commission next week for adoption that will assist the applicant that's on hold right now on a project so that they could move forward. So if you guys want to give us some direction on the distance, then we could come back next week with an item, action item, for the commission to adopt.
If I could, if I could make a suggestion, and that would be to go forward without the change, and if Mr. Jones could communicate that change to planning and zoning, I think one of the commissioners observed that we are not necessarily experts in these matters. in these matters. I think maybe putting that change before the, uh, or at least letting the Planning and Zoning, because those, uh, those folks are much more adept. I'm certainly the, um, I'm certainly the, uh, not the smartest guy on the panel by any stretch of the imagination with that. So perhaps that would be a, a better way to go, because they do have the experience to know perhaps why it is that, at that number, and what would be maybe a good, uh, way forward. Um, Commissioner Wagner.
I, I, I guess my only comment would be, you know, 1,000 always is out there because it's a nice round number. I would be curious to know, since the recommendation is going from certified to regular mail, if going from 1,000 to 1,500 feet creates something that's overly onerous or overly expensive, which you don't have to answer today. Uh, but I think if, if you, my feeling is kind of go forward with what you got. Be interested to know the answer to those questions, and then if we want to make a change, we can, but.
And I think I can answer those now if you'd like.
Sure.
So my, so regular mail's like 66 cents. So my, on our normal case, it's going to probably increase the number of letters by 20 or 30 would be my guess on a normal case. So you're talking a minimal cost of, to the applicant, um, and more people would be notified. I, I don't think there's anything that making that number larger is going to create a, a major problem, either for Planning and Zoning or the applicant, because again, we're going from $8.10 a letter to 66 cents a letter.
Sure. Well, if it's no big deal, then go forth and conquer, I guess.
Commissioner Lawson.
Women, there it goes. Yay. Um, the only thing I'd say, it's not so bad in town, you know, if it's something that's going to happen in a, a close, when you're talking about rural areas, and you're talking about people that own 100 acres, or somebody that owns 55 acres, and, and you're making these kinds of changes, a, a 1,000 feet is nothing. You know, that's your guy across the road. But the person a little bit farther down, uh, that, that's where it's going to kind of hurt, hurt somebody. So I think for the sake of the rural environment, which we still have a lot of, um, I, I would like to see it, uh, 15 or 2,000. And if you take that to them and talk to them a little bit about it and, and see what their consensus is, but that's what I'd like to see.
So if I'm, if I'm perceiving correctly, uh, the, and I'll just look for head nods, commission consensus is that we instruct staff to go forward with what is here, and then we ask Mr. Jones to, uh, forward the suggestion about increasing that from either 1,500 or 2,000 feet and kind of get their feedback. Is that pretty much what I'm hearing? Everybody's good with that? Okay. I seem to have head nods all around. Does that give you what you need to work with, Administrator? Okay, very good. In that case, we will move on to our next, uh, discussion item, which is Kansas City Trap Shooting Association.
Um, the commission may recall that, um, several meetings ago, um, we had this item as a discussion item to move forward with authorization for ARPA funding to be utilized out at, um, um, the KC TA location for some cleanup projects. Um, commission had several questions and asked for additional information and reports, which we did provide to you last week. And, um, so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Deputy Parks Director John Davis to just kind of give a recap and the information about what was in your packets, and certainly answer any questions that the commission has.
Please proceed.
John Davis, Deputy Parks Director. I hope you all received the big email. Um, I have one correction before I forget to tell you. KC TA's board meeting is September 25th, which is Monday, not the 26th. So I will be there. Um, you had several questions, and we've kind of done some follow-up. Um, 25th of August, I did speak with the Derek Dorsey. He's the Park Manager for U.S. Army Corps of Engineers at Smithville Lake to get some clarification. Uh, the Corps considers this a waste cleanup with, there are some environmental concerns, such as lead and other contaminants in the debris that's on the property. Um, there are Missouri DNR requirements that it, how it's collected and where it should go. Um, the Corps does not have a deadline for us to clean this up. They just want to see progress of some kind. We had a plan from November of 2018 that was completed by Burns and McDonald Engineering Company. They've approved that plan. They just want to see progress. Um, some of the consequences, you asked, if we don't, we decide not to do anything, and would be at the time of KC TA's renewal of their lease, which is 2030 in that area, uh, would be non-renewal of that lease, and we could also risk the non-renewal of the county lease. Um, he, Derek is getting some more definite clarification from the Real Estate Division with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, that it's federal government and it does not move fast. So, um, also spoke with, on August 30th, KC TA manager, and we discussed what's going on. First of all, we decided as the Parks Department that we needed to start taking some sample, wanted to take some sample areas, because we're getting a lot of mixed information. There's dirt mixed in with this debris. We need to know exactly how much it weighs for each dump truck load. Um, some of the findings on that is it's not mixed up. It's clay pigeon, or just the clay and wadding, plastic waddings from shotguns. I would say equivalent to like dropping a pile of gravel on the floor here, and that's what it is, is no dirt. Um, we took it from each, the west, east, and east side, and then the center. Um, we averaged probably a little, a little over 10 tons per dump truck load. So, um, so that was our plan for that. So we described that with KC TA, told them what we're doing, and I'll get more back into some of our results from that here in a minute. Um, they're asked, we've told them, we need to have a plan for the future. There's, and that's what we plan on discussing with their board meeting and relaying to their, um, to their manager. You know, we don't want to have, have to clean it up anymore, so we want a plan. Um, they've asked a few questions, you know, um, if they're, if we can help assist them with, if they buy a dumpster every year or twice a year, can we help assist them cleaning it up? And that's, that's possible, but you also need to have a plan B, because we not, you know, in case we decide, or you all give us guidance, we don't want to do that. It's all your responsibility. The second question is biodegradable targets. They currently do not use them, and they have told me they're a little bit more expensive. I haven't priced, haven't got price differences, and hopefully we can clear some of that up in their meeting. But they asked if, because of the expense of those biodegradable targets versus non, but, and then they're going to have to clean up the property anyway, if every year, do they absolutely have to buy the biodegrables? So I asked them, put that in their plan, and when they get the results, bring it back to you all. Um, they were, they had some other concerns listed by the Corps of Engineers in the 2023 report, a leaking forklift and a chemical bottle that was mislaid, not labeled. That has been taken care of as of today, or as a couple of weeks ago. It's, but today. And then we have the, like I say, I will be at their board meeting on the 25th. Um, back to our findings, uh, we took out like a three, three spots. It averaged about 10 tons of load. It was our park staff utilized our dump trucks and our loader, uh, hour and a half round trip from Smithville to Courtney Ridge landfill at Sugar Creek. Uh, the process for them, they said is really easy. We just have a manifest we give to the landfill, and they sign off on it, no big issue. Uh, the average cost of each load was, the average of those three was about $465 a load. So if you take that, Burns and McDonald, in their report, estimated 750 loads, that's 349,000 and some change. Uh, we used 30 gallons of diesel for all three loads in the dump truck, and, you know, so we're estimating that, you know, with all those loads, that'd be about 50,000. But we did not calculate diesel fuel for the loader as they, and any other repairs. And then I hope you received all the pictures and kind of, give an understanding. Aerial photo is about 558 feet of debris. That's equivalent from this wall to the entrance of the courthouse. I tried to give you a kind of a map, but it didn't work out with the tape measure. So, um, we all have any, uh, also the landfill costs haven't went up a whole lot. They went, they're at $39 a ton. Now they were, I think, back in 2020, $34 a ton. So, um, have more information for you after the meeting with KC TA. If you have any other questions.
Um, one of the things, and I, I don't want to necessarily open up for discussion, because I think it's just a thought, so it really needs more research, and that is, um, we're obviously in the process of trying to find a place for our sheriff's department to be able to have a shooting range. Um, like I say, I don't want to get into a discussion on this, because it's not fair to the sheriff unless he is prepared to discuss it, and he, I've not discussed this with him, it just kind of crossed my mind. But if we were to combine, uh, places there, we're going to have cleanup at both locations, one way or another. This might be a way for us to consolidate future, uh, cleanup costs and maybe stay on top of it a little bit more. But like I say, that's something that, um, I, I, I think I'd like to suggest to the sheriff, get his thoughts on it before we get into a deep discussion, um, because I want to make sure that he has the chance to give us some, uh, his input and to have sufficient time to consider it, the way I'm sure that he would responsibly want to consider it. So that's, I'm just throwing that out there as a possibility that we might be able to, uh, uh, basically kill two birds with one stone. But I don't know the practicalities of it. I just want to float the idea.
And from years past, they have talked about that with Corps of Engineers, I believe, and there's discussion about putting up baffling and all that, because if they want to put up a rifle range and handgun range, and then it still goes to the issue of noise and all that. So they have talked about it in the past, but I don't know where actually it ended at this point.
Yeah, I think it might be worth considering. The other thing that crosses my mind is, um, you know, obviously the sheriff would like to have this underway as quickly as possible. This might be a way to expedite his, uh, his process. But like I say, until, uh, until the sheriff has the chance to look over it and give us his input, I, I just wanted to float that as an idea and just kind of leave it at that. So with that, questions or comments? Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. Um, and thanks so much for the follow-up. Very much appreciate it. Um, basically, three questions I have. One is, um, I was trying to track in my head all the math you were throwing out, and, uh, and, and I wasn't doing a good job. And so, uh,
Okay.
I, I, I kind of want to be sure that the number that was thrown out earlier, when we've talked about this, which I think was around 600,000, uh, that we were putting into it, maybe more, we were even talking about, based on this, this experience that we've had so far, extrapolating that out, what, what are we looking at as far as those numbers are concerned?
The numbers you were given last time, um, what, 628,000 was from a bid from a company to come in and run the entire project.
Right.
And that included filling trucks themselves, taking care of all the paperwork, but that does not include the landfill fees.
Yeah.
This estimate is just what the landfill fees cost.
Okay.
Probably our cheapest option right now is for us to do the work in-house as of, with the loader work.
Okay.
Our best option would be to probably go out for bid, to have a trucking company come in and load it.
Yeah.
We don't have, we have two dump trucks, and when I start, we started this project a couple of weeks ago, we started, we're going to have two dump trucks loaded until they called me that morning and said, one of them's coolant line blew. So we were down to one dump truck.
Okay.
So we're capable of loading it, and we would get it done a lot faster.
Mm-hmm.
But, so that's.
No, that, that's fine. I'll, I will add that our colleague, Commissioner Johnson, I think at one point made an offer, although I've seen his truck lately, and I don't think he wants to get it that messy. But, um, all kidding aside, um, that kind of leads actually into the second question, which was, you had said that the, that the Corps just wants to see something done.
Yes.
And so I guess with that in mind, do we contemplate kind of a timeframe, if we, if we go about basically doing the work ourselves, do we contemplate how long that may take? And it seems to me as, even if it's two years or three years or whatever, that's still progress, based on the fact there was no progress for so many years. So thought about that.
Let's say, if you approve, like I say, if you approve funding, we could probably, we'll go out for bid for trucking company and weather dependent, who knows what our winter would, we would love to do it in winter, because the ground's solid.
Right.
But, you know, by the middle of next year, hope we could do it.
Mm-hmm.
If we had the trucking and the funding to do it.
Gotcha. Well, and, and I guess my, my feedback, for whatever it's worth on that point, is, seems to me that as long as we're showing something's happening, if, if that's a few months or a couple of years, I, I don't know that, if that's a problem. But stretching out the expense would be advantageous, I would think, so.
In a way, but do we know what, I don't know what the cost of landfills and fuel prices and equipment prices, they keep going up. It seems like so. We're just kicking it down the road.
We know what our expenses are now, so it's best to.
Right. We're trying to get it done and be done with it.
Gotcha. Last question is, uh, you know, I'd be interested to hear what, uh, you find out on Monday. My, my feeling somewhat is, I just as soon use the biodegradables, because that's less I got to haul off later, and I get, I don't have to deal with that charge. And since we've got a whole lot of charges, I'm looking to cut costs wherever we can. Um, so I would certainly suggest that. But it, it does seem to me, too, um, whatever is agreed upon in some way, I, I sure would like to see it memorialized in some fashion, whether that's through an MOU or a side agreement to the agreement we already have, and maybe you've already contemplated that. But I, I, I guess I want to convey the notion that we can't keep doing business the way we've been doing.
Exactly.
And, and, and they've got to step up, and they've got to do something, and it needs to be memorialized in some fashion that they agree to and we agree to, is my feeling.
And I can't really, you know, go back and say, this group right now is running it, it's all their fault. You know, they've been through several managers, just like we have.
Sure.
So, I mean, we're all, we deliver the bad news, is basically. We all get dumped on us. So.
Yeah. But the, the, the Corps dumps on us, and they don't get that issue. So I want to make sure we don't get dumped on any more than we've already been dumped on. So, uh, anyway, I'll leave it at that, and thank you. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, first on the, the question of switching to biodegradable, um, I don't know much about it, but Commissioner Johnson expressed some displeasure before that they hadn't already been doing that. That may, may have saved us, uh, this expense. Um, and I, you know, uh, take your word for that, and I, and I share your displeasure, because now we got the bill. But I do wonder, um, between now and when we get it cleaned up, if there is actually any value in forcing them to go to biodegradable? Um, because I assume it's just all going to land on top of the pile, right? And get mixed together, and so we're going to have to haul it out?
No, they have a, we look on, there's open area, and then there was a ledge at one time. They just push it off to the ledge. So they don't go out that far. They probably go from here to end of the hallway in the back. And then they just, every time they would clean that debris field, they just push it over the ledge. And that's, the debris field we have now is
Okay.
Over the ledge.
So if, if they were to, today, switch to biodegradable, would that lessen the amount that we're going to have to remove six months from now?
Probably not. Because you're still going Because you're still going to have to clean up plastic wadding and all that from shotguns. So the clays, you know, they'll probably degrade, yes, but you're still going to have plastic wadding from your shotgun shell. So you're still going to have to clean up something, is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
And I think what their point is, you know, the biodegradables are too expensive for their budget and their operations.
Right.
So they're going to have to clean up something anyway. So can, could they just stick with the non-biodegradable if they're going to commit to cleaning it up?
Gotcha. Well, my view would certainly be that going forward, they need to go to biodegradable. I just wonder if, timeline wise, if doing it before we've actually cleaned it up would, would be necessary. But that, I don't think that's the most important piece. I want to drill down a little bit more on the, on the price piece. So if we were to do it today or this winter, what is the estimate of the amount that it would cost?
Okay, so we've got, it's 350 for landfill fees. We've done a little preliminary work calling some trucking companies. And the one that gave us a bid is, gave us over the phone, they haven't came and looked at it. So it's, they said about 235,000. You know, but like I said, they didn't come and look at it. And that's, oh, that's what we would estimate for 750 tons of debris and taking it to the landfill in Sugar Creek. So they might be all over that, but we would still have to go out for bids and all that.
Yeah, of course, of course. But, so we may be in the realm of 600,000 as.
Probably close. I would say we'll go over a little, but if we can probably hopefully find that in budget here and there. So if we had to do at least what we could and then finish it up or what, little bit ourselves.
And so if I could interject, sort of what started this conversation was us coming to the commission to authorize the ARPA funding that we had encumbered for this project. And so while we've been talking about six, excuse me, 600,000, actually, we've been updating our ARPA funds. And so what is earmarked for this project is $750,000. So based on what Mr. Davis has indicated with regard to tipping fees and hiring a firm to do the loading, if it goes over 600,000, then I think we can accommodate that with the ARPA funding that is basically an infrastructure, basically a cleanup project of water quality.
Thank you. No, that's great. I mean, it's just good to, good to hear because I think in our previous discussions, we had thought, you know, four years have passed, maybe the cost had gone up. Plus now, I assume there's four years of additional cleanup, you know, materials. So there's that piece of it too. So, you know, we had talked about it might be over a million. And so I'm, you know, grateful to hear maybe it's six, six or 700,000.
Great.
So, okay. Last question is on the environmental piece. Do we have our own sort of internal opinion as to, because, because this piece for me is a pretty important as to this question of how quickly we go about this process and how, how much urgency we feel? If, if there's a concern that we're potentially, you know, you mentioned lead and, and I know that the Corps has mentioned, you know, contaminating water, waterways and whatnot. So it just feels like an important piece of this, whether we feel that there is a legitimate environmental concern here. Because if there is, then I think we ought to do this as quickly as possible. And that distinguishes it from just if it's, you know, an ice war.
Well, first of all, I did forget that we are going out for another second sample to, or, you know, there's been three samples over the years, but we are getting that, that was sent off Monday. So we are getting another test, but the last two have all said lead and the other contaminants. You take the risk of lead runoff in the streams and all that, I, I don't know what the risk is because.
Do we, yeah, and so a question for you or anybody, do we have any way of attempting to, to have our own opinion on that matter? Or is this just an, an issue of relying on, on the Corps and their request?
I guess here's my point, I guess really the Corps of Engineers has said they want it cleaned up and they're the landlord. So the debate of how much lead is in it and all that is kind of no.
Okay, so your, your opinion is we're essentially obligated to do this?
Yes.
That we, because we would potentially lose the lease arrangement?
We lose our lease.
When, when it's up for renewal?
And all our investments that we've had in the, in.
Right, well, that's helpful to know too, yeah. That if we feel definitively that we have no option, I mean, that, that may be an option.
Like I said, I don't know what the contaminant risks of it are. I mean, it's lead, I mean, they've shut towns down because of lead issues in the past and, you know, so. But I don't know what the levels are, but they say it's there. So.
Understood.
And I would refer to the independent engineering report that we have. That's a couple of years old, that indicated the sampling and the lead envir, you know, content and the need to clean it up. So I would say, yes. Not only is there an obligation with regard to the Corps, but I believe there is also based on the ingredients that came back in the results, that there's an environmental issue that we need to clean up.
Yeah, well, I think that's helpful clarity, you know, based upon what previous discussions we had on this, on both pieces there, frankly. And glad to hear that maybe the cost is a little lower than initially anticipated. So to the extent that you're looking for a view, my view is that we move forward and get this thing cleaned up as quickly as possible. Thanks.
Commissioner Lawson?
Okay. One of the things I wanted to let you know, the wads that you're talking about, the plastic, they should be cleaning those up themselves. And they have a little device that they ha, drag behind a tractor that can pick all of those up. So that should, should be their responsibility. And, you know, when you're meeting with them, I think you want to bring that forward because they can do it. That we did it in the past, did it every week. You know, we picked those things up and it was no big deal, throw them in the trash. But as far, I think they've been talking to some of the people that are members up there that have utilization of big trucks and that maybe there's a way that they can help participate in that. So I think once that you have an opportunity to meet with them and see if they come forward with some better plans where they can be more of a partner in helping to clean that up, even though, you know, where maybe even they do the cleanup and we pay for nothing but the dumping, you know, the landfill costs. But maybe there's some kind of partnership you can work with them on, because I think that's what they're trying to look for. And then I think as far as the biodegradables, if, if that's what it takes to keep this in line as it should be, then I think it's just going to have to be an expense that they absorb. They can always raise their rates a little bit with our approval, they're supposed to bring that to us. And, and then if we can get that done, accomplished, where they do the biodegradables, and there's some new biodegradables that are out there now, that might be the better choice than what they used to have. They crybabyed that the old ones broke harder than the others. Well, maybe it's because they were poor shots. So I don't see that, you know, that's, that's a big deal, we just have to live with it. So I think that, that the big thing is, when you go to them, please try to, you know, I, here's the thing, we have our marinas, we have our golf course, have all these wonderful facilities up there. And, and they're a great thing for our people in our community to utilize. It's the same darn thing with this trap range. We, and I've said this before and I'm going to say it again until somebody listens to me. No, nobody really sits and puts a pencil with how much money we spend and how little we get back on, on our marinas. All the maintenance for the marinas that we do, that restaurant out there that we spent a fortune on and got no return that first year. We spent, what, $500,000 or something for that damn thing? We built it, we, we put all the equipment in it, and then after one year, the people walked away with no penalty. And they should have been penalized for breaking the lease. And so, you know, we do things like that for all of the other facilities. These guys have paid their money every year, every quarter, they pay their money. Yeah, this is a really, could be a very harmful thing that needs to be taken care of, but it's been sitting out there for 35 darn years and nobody has done a damn thing about it. And now all of a sudden, we want to come to these guys and say, okay, you know, you've, you've been bad and you haven't got this cleaned up. They've tried in the past and, you know, they just never worked out. The county never did anything about it either. So I, I think we try to partner with them and I think they're more than willing to do that. But I think that one point is, you're going to have to hold their feet to the fire on the biodegradable. And then, then we don't have that worry in the future.
Well, the way I see it, if it's your all's consensus that I go and when I meet with them Monday and say, you all want them to start using biodegradables, then.
Yeah.
I don't think they have a argument.
Yeah.
I mean, we're getting ready to spend a lot of money on this project or potentially. So that's a small request.
Yeah. I think for what we've got to put in to clean it up, I, I think that that's, that's a small portion that they have to do, so.
But in regards to them using their trucks, that might have to be discussion with legal because I, there might be a little bit of liability and stuff.
Yeah.
Because you are, in the long haul, you're carrying a contaminated substance, so.
Okay.
But I, I would vouch for them. And you're right, they've, like I told you earlier, they've had several managers over the years and so have we, and it's got dumped on all of us. I've looked at their calendars and, you know, if you look at all the kids' events they have, 4H, all the high school tournaments, they have quite a bit more than they do normal shooting leagues, so.
Yeah.
I'll say that.
They perform a great service out there. The, the 4H kids and the, especially the FFA kids come out by 300 at a time and shoot. And, and then, you know, they have all these benefit shoots like for that horse facility that, that were for children with handicaps or, or veterans with PTSD. And so they, they perform good services and they, they bring their, up there and make money on it. So they do a lot of good. And, and it, it's great to see these kids out there as a family shooting. Our whole family shoots up there on a team. Our son, our daughter, granddaughter, our son and grandson-in-law and, you know, we do, it's a family thing, so. And you see a lot of families doing that, so. It's a good service, but, but then they've got to be a, a good partner to us as well.
Okay.
So, thank you very much. I appreciate all you've done on this and, and let us know how the, it turns out on Monday for you.
All right.
And if they give you a hard time, let me know.
Okay. Commissioner Johnson, I believe you want to be recognized?
Yes, thank you, sir. So I, I talked about this last time and I'm just going to reiterate this, I'm, I'm just really dumbfounded about this whole situation on a number of fronts. First of all, you know, we talked about putting together a, some kind of MOU or something moving forward. We have a contract in place with KCTA. And if I'm not mistaken, the way I read it, it's very clear, KCTA is responsible for that cleanup. Am I wrong about that, Counselor? Or does it say that?
That's what the contract says, yes.
So we already have a contract that says they're responsible for it. So making another contract says you're responsible for it doesn't change anything. We already have that. And they haven't done anything with it. So on that part, I, I like what, what Commissioner Lawson said about, you know, what do they have to offer? But I really want to know, what are they putting forward to help with this cleanup? Do they have money in their account? Do they have people that can help? Do they have dump trucks? What do they have? Have we looked into that? What?
And that's something we're going to have to address Monday.
Yeah, I, I think that's important to find out. Because they need to come forward with this. This is theirs, not ours. This is theirs and we're not holding them to it. And I, I realize maybe they don't have money, I don't know, maybe they do have money. They had a half million dollars for some restaurant or something that you, that I didn't know about, but I don't know how much money they have. I know they make money off, off mining the lead. I don't know if that's insignificant.
They make money off of it, yeah.
So, so I don't, you know, we need to look at that and, and hold them to our current contract. Here's the other thing that dumbfounds me, and I've said this before, most of you know I spent a, a career in law enforcement. I've been shooting for, for 40 years now. Not just shooting, I've been in law enforcement, I've been in a SWAT team in LA County for half my career, as a professional sniper for most of those years. I've spent more time on ranges across this nation than, than most people have. Hours and hours and hours. And never once, never, I even have my own range, I've managed ranges, never once have I been to a range where you can walk on there, shoot what you want and walk off and not clean up. Every range I've been to, you clean up your targets, you clean up your brush, you clean up your shotgun shells, you clean up your wadding, that's done before you leave the range. To have this much stuff out there, first of all, if I go to a range and they let me shoot all I want and they'll clean it up, that's great. So that's great if that's their plan, but then they have to clean it up. If they're going to let people come and shoot and not clean up, then they have to have a plan to clean it up. And apparently they don't. And that just baffles me. Nowhere in this nation have I seen a range that you're allowed to do that and you don't have to clean up after yourself. And when we talk about the pigeons, there's biodegradable pigeons, I use them myself, they're 10 cents a piece. And that's not the bulk rate, so I'm sure you can get them a lot cheaper. That's just me buying them at the, at the store. 10 cents a piece, that's it. So I'm sure they can get a better rate than that. Commissioner Lawson talks about they should be picking up their wadding anyway, that they, they mine for the lead, they have a company that comes out that mines for the lead, takes the lead out because they make money off that lead. So that lead is gone. The only thing left is the shotgun shells that they drop, that drops out of the gun. Pick those up before you leave and we're done. There shouldn't be a problem like this. So this is mismanagement and frankly, a violation of their contract, it's going to cost taxpayers a million dollars to clean up. That's crazy.
Jerry.
That's crazy. And that's just, I, I'm not, I'm not buying that. And we need to push back and find out, can, can the KCTA come forward and with some, some kind of dump truck, some kind of bulldozer, something that they can help clean up and, and, and put a little bit more into this than just say, oh, sorry, we didn't live up to our contract, you guys cleaned it up, taxpayers cleaned it up? That's just not right. That is not right.
And I understand. I agree with a lot of them. And that's, Monday is, we're also asking for, you know, what can you contribute, if you can? We'd like to see their books and all that. Auditor has.
Yeah.
Done a report several years back. We'd like to have reports of what your income is, what your visitors and all that. And we're have, we're going to have to be more strict on.
And I understand, you talk about different managers, do people come in, some volunteers, that kind of stuff, whatever. And nobody really takes responsibility for it. But it doesn't make it our responsibility now. That doesn't make it the county's responsibility necessarily, even though we're the, I guess we're the landlords for them, but nonetheless, that's, that's how I feel about it. I think it's just, it's just not as simple as, okay, county, write a check for us and clean it up. I, I just don't think that's what we should be doing.
I understand your thoughts and I agree with a lot of it, but I also, I doubt they have the money. And I mean, in the end, I don't want to speculate, they might be sitting on a safety's account that I don't know about, but I doubt they.
And if it's just a matter of recruiting some volunteers, you know, if you've got some shooters out there, hey, this guy owns an excavation company or this guy owns a dump truck company or whatever, hey, let's help out then. Let's pitch in. Even if they can't do all of it, I mean, help out. That's what I'm hoping they can do.
Right. I mean, and it comes down to we're going to, the Parks Department and county is going to have to be more strict on their operations and oversight of what they're doing.
I appreciate that.
And we haven't done that in the past and.
Thank you.
We've learned a lesson, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Two things before I go to Commissioner Lawson. One is, obviously there are contracts involved in what we're talking about. I don't think up to this point, we've, we've crossed any lines, but I would ask commissioners to be mindful that these are contracts and if we find ourselves in some, some action on these contracts, we don't, those would, that would be a discussion for possibly an executive session or later on. And what we say would be something that might apply, some kind of a commitment. So I would just say, like I said, right up until now, I don't think anything has happened. I would just make commissioners mindful of that. The other thing that I have a question about is, if we were to, and perhaps this is more for council, if some members of the KCTA were to start loading things in, in trucks that they might have or whatever, if, if they participated in a very hands-on way, does that constitute some kind of a liability threat for the county?
Well, again, I want to be a little careful about talking about liability too much. I mean, you know, my, my read of the contract is that they have a duty to clean it up. And if they choose to undertake their duty independent of us, that's a, by far the cleanest approach. We're just saying, we're, we're having you do, you're, you're doing what you're supposed to do. We don't even necessarily have to know what they're doing as long as they're taking care of what we believe their responsibility to be. It becomes a much more tricky situation if we're seen as partnering with them on the cleanup. And so, that's the part where we'd wanna be very clear about who's doing what, who has coverage for what and who's paying for what.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking that might be something, and I don't wanna go any deeper into the subject than that, but that might be something that we would want to have a discussion related to the actual legal aspects of it. As I say, I, I think that we're, we're okay right now, but I don't wanna, I, I don't want to, at least myself, go any deeper in that and, and have any, any lack of clarity when, if we decide to go forward with some action. Commissioner Lawson.
Okay. Couple of things. First of all, everybody picks up their own shelves. If they don't pick it up, the kids that work there pick them up. But everything's cleaned up before anybody walks away. All of the wads are picked up, they may not be in the last month or so, but they are picked up and that's all done. They clean up the lead and yes, that's the one income, good income, that they have to keep that place going. We don't, they had a roof that was horribly degraded, they've had to fit, do that themselves. That's the tune of $20,000 or more. And everything up there, whether it's new flooring in there or whatever it is, they pay for all that crap themselves. Nobody pays for it. We, the county, pay for all of the decks out at the marinas, we maintain the boats, we maintain the golf course, we pay for all kinds of stuff for the golf courses, we do all that. We don't pay one red cent. This is the first darn time we've had to pay anything to KCTA in the 30-some years they've been out there. They paid us every quarter, that's for sure. They have done that. And they've maintained that all by themselves with no help from us, you know, all of that. I'm as fiscally responsible as anybody that sits up here on this desk and I'm always crybabying about, we can't spend that, we gotta watch that. I, I'm very careful about that, but I was under the impression that that contract spoke to us cleaning it up and I may be reading that improperly, but I thought that was the, the county was, had their responsibility to do that. The Army Corps of Engineers has never said anything until maybe five years ago, six years ago, I think, when they really start saying something about it. And, and it's been going back and forth ever since. So, yeah, we haven't cleaned it up, they haven't cleaned it up, but we haven't paid one cent out there for them. They've done it all by themselves. So, you know, I, I'm not just defending them because we go up there and shoot, we go up there and ride, you know, whatever else you do up there. We go out on the boat and, and we use that facility, we love it up there and, and everything's maintained by the county. Every damn thing up there is maintained by the county except for that trap range. So, if we've gotta spend that money to pick that stuff up, great. Now, you know, and they will assist, they'll do it and then they'll start doing the biodegradable thing and, or they need to, they need to do that. And unless, you know, now I don't know, I'm not sure the contractor can talk about that privately and see whether it is or is not something that it is our responsibility, but I thought that it was. Anyway, regardless, I've had my say.
Commissioner Wagner.
Thank you very much. A lot of great discussion on this and just a couple of things that strike me. One, to our colleague's point about, you know, we do subsidize recreation to a degree. I mean, no one, no one, you know, no child goes to a slide and someone's there looking for a buck for them to go use it, right? I mean, you subsidize it and you replace it when it's time. So, I, I do understand that and, and, you know, when you blow it up to other things, whether it's marinas or, or these sorts of facilities, there is some assumption of, of subsidizing an operation to some degree. I, I do believe and to our colleague's earlier point about, you know, another piece of paper, well, I, I get it, you know, if you ignored the first one, you can ignore the second one too, and so I understand that. But I do believe that if the idea of Monday's meeting is to get to some resolution on what you're gonna do, then my point is simply memorialize it in some fashion so everybody knows what everybody's doing, however you wish to do it. But it does strike me, now going back to Commissioner Carpenter's earlier point about the biodegradables, it, it strikes me that unless you know how you're going to clean everything up, then it's very easy to then just make the same old mess. And, and I guess my very simple way of looking at this is if we were to divide the, the entire area that needs to be cleaned up in five sections and you clean up the first section, well, then you should be using biodegradables there because there's nothing else there, right? And, and if indeed the plastic is getting picked up, then to your point, there shouldn't be anything else there. And so, I, I guess, maybe I'm just way too much in the weeds and she'll kick me if I am, but I, I guess, I say all that to say, I, I'd really like to see what the plan is because it would seem to me, well, and not me necessarily, but that there be a plan that then contemplates, well, if you clean it up, now we're gonna do some biodegradables to make sure you don't have to clean the thing up again and so on and so on and so on. And, and, and I guess to know then that there is some plan that comes out of your meeting on Monday is important to me because, you know, there is a little part of me, quite honestly, that says, yeah, I, I know this is a public use, but man, 600 grand is 600 grand that I could have used somewhere else. And so, in my mind, being able to say, we've got a plan to clean it up and there's a plan then that the Corps can see that will be executed and to the earlier conversation that if, if the KCTA will take apart of this, independent of us, fantastic and whatever's left over, okay, what's left over for us? But to me, that's, that's necessary. I, I, I feel like we're, we're kinda throwing around some generalities, but if you're gonna clean up something, I mean, the Army Corps is just not gonna willy-nilly say, oh, you cleaned it up. It's what's the plan?
Right.
And, and once that plan is executed, then you have the new way of operating that business that you hold them to. So, I'm sorry, probably far more in the weeds than I need to be, but just the comments brought that to my attention. Thank you.
Commissioner Whittington.
You said that you've had multiple soil tests over the years, right?
There was two.
Two?
One in 2017 and one in 2020, I believe.
What did they come back with?
The contamination with lead in the first one and the second one was lead and barium.
What was that?
Barium and lead.
Okay.
Lead was the highest.
Okay. Yeah, no, I agree with everything everybody said. I think, I know that they used to use for a while biodegradable and then they stopped. I really think we need to push and make sure that this is not a problem again. And I know this is probably gonna piss some people off, but our, our lease is up in 2029, 2030. I think this county really needs to have a serious conversation on, are we even gonna renew our lease with the county? Should we renew our lease with the Corps? The golf course is a loss leader or, you know, we lose money on the golf course. Everybody complains about the, the boats and how we don't maintain the marina. The only people I really never hear from are the trap shooters, but everybody else is complaining about the quality of service that the county provides. We spent $500,000 to a million dollars on a restaurant that failed, right? So, I think, I, I honestly think that, you know, it's time that we have a serious conversation and should we continue to put, I know there's other businesses that have said that they would be interested in taking over those leases. Why, why should the government stand in the way of the private sector? So, I think this is a serious conversation that we need to have going forward as a commission and, you know, I, we have some serious needs in this county, our roads are terrible and all the money that we put towards the Parks Department up there that loses money, I say, let's get out of our leases, let's not renew our lease and let's actually do some service that benefits everybody and not just a select few that use the, use the marine and the golf course. So, that's where I'm at. But going forward, I think we need to make sure that we're using biodegradable so we're not in this mess again and I think Trap, Trap Association needs to step up and live up to their contract too, so that's where I'm at.
All right. Further comments or questions? I believe the, with instruction, we've had a good, relatively broad discussion, I think that's a very healthy and a good thing. I believe administrative
Forward to the commission, but based on your discussions this evening, my recommendation might be wait until after the conversations that it will occur with the association next week. See the outcome of that, see what their plan is, talking about the biodegradable and cleanup going forward and let us come back to you with more information and go from there.
Great. Okay, so you're not really seeking any consensus right now, it's just mainly at this moment in informational and then we will renew this discussion once the meeting has been held and once staff has had a chance to maybe digest that a little bit and come forward with a bit more information for us. Okay? If there's no further discussion, we will move on to our next item, which is the discussion of the property tax mill levy and that is the administration, administrator.
So, tonight for discussion is to discuss the property tax mill levy that needs to be set for the general fund and for road and bridge and some of our outside agencies. So, I have a brief presentation to talk to you a little bit about historically what has occurred with our assessed valuation. As many of you are familiar with, we also have rules and regulations and the Hancock Rule about setting the mill levy and those guidelines and present to you some options for you to consider tonight for your discussion. So, I'm gonna start out with a chart that simply shows you historically what's happened with the assessed valuation for Clay County since 2012 through 2023. Now, this is total assessed valuation, so this is personal property and real estate property. And so, you know that we have reassessments every other year and so you see that somewhat reflected in bigger jumps from year to year. And so, if you focus in between 2022 and 2023, we saw an increase in our total assessed valuation adjusted of $798,550,135. So, that's basically almost a 14% increase in our assessed evaluation for real estate and personal property. And so, hopefully you're bringing this up on your monitor because it might be a little hard to read on the screen, but for the audience, I'll kind of walk through it for you. So, what I've tried to do is, and with the help of the auditor, break the assessed valuation down by category for you. And so, you'll see that current year, 2023, which is what we just received, for real estate, the assessed valuation is basically 5.3, almost 5.4. The prior year, 2022, the real estate assessed valuation was 4.6. So, real estate, you see, went up 16.7% of an increase in assessed evaluation for real estate alone. But then, because that's a large number, I wanted to break that down for you. And so, of that increase in real estate, $86 million, basically 11% of the increase is due to new construction. We're a growing county, so new residential, new commercial properties. But the largest adjustment in the pre-assessed value of real estate was due to reassessment. And you see, that was the biggest jump and that actually reflects about 80, almost 89% of the increase in our real estate assessed valuation. Personal property is the other category and you'll see that current is 1.2 million. You know what, slightly from 2020 used assessed valuation up about 4%. That could be from additions and also changes in value of personal property. Railroad and utilities also saw an increase going from 220,000, 220 million to 261 million. So, you see the total current valuation for the county for this year that we just received is literally 6.8, almost 6.9. That is up from prior year, which was a little over 6. So, again, 14.31%. Now, we do some adjustments because of TIF. So, properties that are in TIFs, we deduct from the assessed valuation when we're calculating and you can see that it did go up from 259 to 321. So, TIF amount adjustment went up about 24%, which gets us to the adjusted valuation for the county of 6.5, up from 5.7. So, that's basically slightly below a 14% increase in our adjusted valuation. So, what does that mean when we start talking about the mill levy? And so, there's a lot of numbers and information on the chart, so I'd kind of, if you bear with me, I'd like to walk you through it. So, we talk about the fund, the county, just at the Clay County alone, this is not talking about any other agencies. Our general fund mill levy currently is .0250. Now, as we talked about, there are rules, regulations, Hancock with what can the ceiling be on the mill rate for 2023. Based on that, the highest ceiling rate could be for general fund would be .0256. So, that is a rate change of .0006 or in essence, a 2% increase in the mill levy for the general fund. The revenues that that would generate, estimated revenues for 2024 would be $1.6 million. Our current revenues for the general fund property tax is a little over 1.4 million. So, comparing year-to-year revenue for general fund property tax would be an increase in revenue of $237,589 for the county, which reflects basically a 16.5% increase in income. We also have a road and bridge mill levy that goes specifically for our road and bridges. Our current mill rate is 0.0697. Again, because of the adjustments, because of Hancock, the ceiling rate for 2023 is actually less. It is 0.0657. So, we're required to have a rollback in our mill levy for road and bridge. It's a rate change of .004. So, that reduces the mill rate by 6%. When you look at revenue income forecast, our current revenues for road and bridge is a little over 4 million. So, even with the rollback of the mill levy, we would still see an estimated increase in revenues next year of 4.3 million. So, again, an increase in revenue of slightly less than $300 million, $300,000, which is basically a 7% increase in revenue. We do not have a Parks mill levy rate and we do not have a debt service mill levy rate. You also then see on this chart, the mill levy for the outside agencies, which is the mental health, the development disabilities and the senior services. And so, again, following that same format across, you can see what the current mill levy is, what the ceiling mill levy rate is in 2023 for those agencies. They also are, will see a rollback in their mill levy, basically reducing the mill by 6%. But they will also see, even with a rollback in the, in the mill levy, they will also see an increase in their annual revenues of approximately 7%. So, we wanna talk a little bit about the general fund and propose to the commissioners some options for you to consider and what the financial impact would be depending on what you do with setting the mill levy for the general fund. So, again, that first line tells you, again, looking at our maximum that is allowed of going to .0256, which is that 2% increase, as we just talked about on the previous slide, that would increase revenues next year of $237,589. Or the commission could leave the mill rate where it currently is, so go below the ceiling that you're allowed, that county is allowed, and set the mill late, mill rate for the general fund at .0250. So, no increase in the mill rate, but if you look following across, you'll see that that does generate additional revenue slightly below $200,000 for the general fund. Another option that you could consider is reducing the mill levy from what it currently is and setting a mill rate of .0231. So, that reduces the rate by .0019. In essence, that's an 8% reduction in the mill levy and that would generate a slightly less than $72,000 a year of income in the general fund, which is a 5% increase. You could do revenue neutral, meaning the revenue that comes to the county and the general fund for property tax equals the revenue that we currently receive this year. And to do that, you would lower the mill rate by 12%. And then also giving the commission other options for your consideration, you can see that we said, well, what happens if you reduce the mill rate by 20%, 40%, 60%, 80% or you completely reduce, well, there is no general fund mill levy? And then to the far right, you is no general fund mill levy? And then to the far right, you see the financial impact to the general fund of losing and reducing income in 2023, anywhere from 8.9% to basically 100% of the property tax would go away for the general fund. We also have the road and bridge mill levy. And as I said on the previous slide, pursuant to rules and Hancock, there's an automatic rollback that the road and bridge maximum levy is .0657, and it produces slightly less than $300,000 of addition, of additional income next year. However, as you all are familiar with, we have a statutory or obligation contracts, agreements, funding going to the road districts and to the cities. And so in essence, that increase of $300,000, even though we have the rollback, basically is effectively wiped out by our obligations to the road districts and to the cities. So we are recommending not to reduce the road and bridge mill levy any more than the 6% reduction that is the cap that we have. Any additional reduction in the, in the road and bridge mill levy beyond that will then increase our obligation to find funding from other sources to meet that obligation to the road and bridge and to the cities. So just highlight for next steps, the public hearing is scheduled for next Thursday evening. Also on your agenda will be an ordinance to consider establishing the mill levies for 2023. We are under a time constraint that it must be certified by October 1. So events must happen next week. And so I'm going to go back to this particular slide with the options and have your discussion about what would you like to do and where would you like to set the mill levy for the general fund, and certainly the road and bridge also.
Just to be clear, you're talking, what you would like to come out of here this evening is with the number so that it can be plugged in and, and worked on next week, or am I overstating?
No, that is correct. What we would like from the commission this evening is your direction on what you would like the mill levy for the general fund and the road and bridge fund to be for, and that would be in the ordinance next week. We would open it up for public hearing and hear public comment, and then it would be on for an ordinance for the commission to adopt. So it can be certified and meet the deadline of October 1.
I just wanted to make it clear to all commissioners, in case there was any question, that we are at crunch time, so the clock is ticking very loudly, and we will need to make that decision tonight, essentially. Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. I'll throw out the first salvo. Question is really off of this slide, and, and I just think I need a little help in the detail of Hancock, because obviously the idea is with the rising assessments, you're not supposed to see a windfall and so on and so forth. So I guess my question is, I'll back up. My assumption was you could not do more than a 5% revenue increase because of Hancock, but are you suggesting that as long as you are staying with your current mill rate, that, that is not the case, or kind of give me a little bit of a...
If you're going to get in the weeds about Hancock, I'm going to bring up our county auditor who does all those forms for us.
As I've already established, I love going in the weeds.
Missouri law has changed since I've been gone, but I think, and I'm going to ask Victor to do it, but I, but I, my understanding is, yes, there is, it's tied to CPI with, with Hancock, but also, you know, we have new construction, which I think we're certainly eligible to capture. So it's not going to necessarily tie to 5%.
Yeah, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to understand where the windfall begins and where it ends and all of that.
Yeah, no, excellent question. Victor Hulbert, Clay County Auditor. So yeah, as the minister noted, there are several components here. A lot of that, you know, 5% cap is specific to the real estate, so the aggregate real estate. So that's one component. We're looking at, you know, total revenues. And, and so personal property is something that's exempt, new construction, that, that, you know, can, you can have, enjoy all the revenue on that from your, your current levy rate. Something that's unique here with the county is especially the general fund rate that we should note, especially you're seeing a 2% increase on our, our maximum levy. That's taking into account the voluntary reduction we took last year. In addition, we have a requirement under, under Missouri law to basically take what's called a sales tax rollback on our general levy, where essentially we take 50% of the sales tax revenues that we receive in a year off of the, the maximum ceiling on our, on our general fund. Because actually, under law, the, the maximum levy we can have on the general fund is 35 cents. The cap on that is a little bit lower, and we can get into this a little more later as well, but, you know, 21 cents is our, our actual ceiling, and then we have a sales tax rollback beyond that of about 19 cents. So that's how we get to the current ceiling on that general fund levy and why it actually increased. But again, yeah, as the minister said, you know, the state tax commission gives a CPI number this year of 6.5%. Missouri law says under the Hancock amendment that the cap you can, you can, you know, go no greater than inflation or 5%. So this year it's 5%. And so basically, the levy is reduced, so you can produce only 5% revenue growth on that real estate and, and, you know, personal property combined. So...
Got you. So, so I guess with all that in mind, what we're saying is, all these choices that are in front of us conform to what Hancock would say. I'm seeing the nod, so...
So this has been certified by the state auditor's office, what we were saying before you. So, and if the levy we submit, they will actually, you know, they'll certify it again with the clerk's office. We'll, we'll provide that paperwork to them. So...
Very good. Thank you. I appreciate that. So then the, the only other comment I would, well, two comments. One, on road and bridge, I kind of tend to think, we've talked about how we need money for roads, roads and bridges, don't really feel like moving off of that. But concerning the general fund rate, the, the only comment, other comment I would make is, as we have discussed how and in what ways we will deal with Senate Bill 190 and, and the, the, the responses that we've gotten from the public related to that, knowing that we really can't deal with that until probably next year, or if it gets fixed or whatever, I, I do tend to think that keeping it either at the current or the, the 5% increase makes some sense, so that however 190 gets dealt with, the base of that freeze isn't at the highest level that we produced this year, if that makes sense. And, and so I tend to be either at that current or that 5% piece. That's just me, just because I'm trying to look ahead at what will happen with that if something happens, or who knows if anything's going to happen. But anyway, that's my thought, and I'll leave it for others to discuss.
Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, sir. So I think just about every politician would love to say they lowered taxes. But at the same time, we have had lots of discussions about salaries that we pay, which is one of our most, our biggest expenses in the county, is salaries to our employees, and particularly when we're talking about a class and comp study coming up, which, which may change some things. So with that in mind, and you know the budget better than everybody, I'm going to put you on the spot here, and you can refuse this question if you want. In all honesty, seriousness, you can refuse this if you want, because I'm going to put you on the spot, but, but I'm just wondering if you have a recommendation?
Well, there will be the side of me that will always say to you, you know, right now, we're in the middle of working on balancing next year's budget, and we're not balanced, right? That being said, I also recognize the issues that our residents are facing when they go to the grocery store, when they go to the gas pumps. And it is challenging times for many of our residents and our employees. And so that being said, I would, I would recommend to the commission to not lower it any less than the 8%. If you reduce the existing mill levy by 8%, that does provide basically a 5% increase in revenue for the general fund. My vision is that's trying to keep us whole, because as we know, inflation is running around somewhere between 4% or 5%. So our costs to do business from materials and supplies at minimum, we're seeing about 4% or 5%. So from that perspective, I wouldn't recommend going any lower than that in a loss of revenue compared to this year's. So...
But would you suggest that over keeping it current?
Well, certainly keeping it current, not, not lowering the mill levy, but keeping the mill levy current does give us approximately about $200,000 more revenue than, than this year. And so again, we have made in this year's budget some substantial commitments in salaries, especially in our law enforcement. And we're seeing requests again for next year in our, for the sheriff's department. And there's a substantial request to the tune of $1 million again in personnel costs for 2024. And we do need to be looking long-term down the road to make sure that those changes that we're trying to implement are sustainable.
So when we talk about going from the current to that 8% reduction, what, off the top of your head, you know, on average, would that mean for savings for our citizens, an average citizen?
You know, and I apologize, I didn't really run the numbers on that. I did run looking at, well, yes, I did. So if we, not at current, but if we did, the county would implement the 8% reduction in the mill levy for an average home, and I picked a price of $325,000 for the value, basically, you know, from the general fund county, that reduces their tax liability like $1.17. It's pretty, but again, our property tax for the county for general fund and even road and bridge is pretty nominal when individuals get their tax bills. So that reduction would basically save an average homeowner maybe a, you know, a dollar 25 cents a year.
So what I'm looking at is trying to balance the, the benefit to the homeowner and the taxpayer versus the benefit to the county, depending on what, what choice we take. When I say the county, I'm actually specifically our county employees and our services that we offer, and, and which would be hurt more by depending on what we select. So but actually your, your comments are very helpful. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Commissioner Withington?
This is just a quick, I have a couple of questions, but a quick question. You've been on here the longest. Which, so parks and debt are at zero. What other, was it the general or was it road and bridges that the county promised voters decades ago would be set at zero?
That would be, and that was before my time, for better or worse.
I just know that you've been, you've had that conversation several times. I've just, I've just, I can't remember which one it is.
It was, and I'll look at, I look at...
Yeah, it was the whole thing across the board. It was, I wanted, that was what I was thinking, but I wanted to verify my memory was correct. Yeah, they were talking about zeroing it all out. And in fact, just to give you a quick anecdote, it was in fact, I think, reduced very far down. There was an, there was an interesting incident where our meetings prior to, you know, in way back when, where on Mondays, there was a vote taken to, two to one to do a, a reduction, if I'm remembering this correctly, and then that was reversed on a subsequent vote on the following Wednesday or something like that. So I mean, we've got a real mixed history on that. The, I think the original thing that you're referring to, though, is the imposition of a sales tax. And my take on it was that that was related mainly to general, to the general fund, because road, I, in my mind, I carved it out, but that was what was, I don't want to say promised, because once again, I, you would almost have to go back. I don't know that it was in the actual legislation, or we wouldn't be having the con, the conversation. But it was represented to be...
Impplied or whatever.
Yeah, it was represented to do that. And that was something that some people got, I, I, you know, certainly understandably upset about. Does that help answer your question?
Yeah, no, that, that helps. Because I was just wondering why general fund was a lot lower than the roads and bridges and the others were at zero. And I just couldn't remember which one was implied that it would be zeroed out. So, you know, 2024, I'm, it's going to, it's probably going to be a crappy year economically. You know, GDP is projected to only grow at 1%. You know, I have family of five. When I go to the store, I see it. I know our citizens are struggling. I know they're hurting. I, I definitely will not support raising the mill, mill rate at all. My position would be revenue neutral. I, you know, I know that's a 12% deduction. I know you don't recommend that, but I, with, with the economic stuff going on and the volatility in the economy and the, and the world actually, I just, I can't ask our citizens to pay anymore, and I'm not going to, and I, and I wouldn't support asking them to pay anymore. So I'm at revenue neutral.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yeah, I, I would agree with both of my colleagues. I think that it, it would be best to leave it as it is.
Revenue neutral?
Yeah, leave it neutral. Absolutely.
Well, when I said revenue neutral, I meant the 12%.
The one that's highlighted in green?
No, 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 no.
Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood.
Revenue neutral is lowering it to 0.0220.
Yeah, so it's a 12% reduction from the current mill levy.
Thank you. I'm glad I asked and clarified.
No, I'd like to leave it as is, as it is today.
Revenue, not the mill levy.
Yeah.
So you're talking about the option that is highlighted in green?
Yes.
And Commissioner Withington is talking about the one that...
I'm talking about the one that says revenue, neutral revenue, 12% deduction.
Okay, good. Just wanted to make sure we were clear.
I thought you were talking about leaving it as is. No, I, I think we should look at, it can't be anymore. I think we'd be crazy to raise it, but, but keeping it as where it is, and that gives us the sufficient increase in the revenue, and still doesn't hurt anybody. They're used to what they're paying now. Anyway, leave it as is for me.
Okay, I'm sorry. Could I, should I have clarification? Because you were talking, and so I didn't hear the conversation very well. Are you talking that again to keep the mill levy where it is now?
Yes.
But, okay, so a slight increase in revenue, but the mill levy stays the same?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Commissioner Carver?
Thank you, Commissioner. So I totally agree with Commissioner Lawson, once again.
Right again. No, no, I mean, it's been way more than twice. It's, it's, look, I agree with Commissioner Withington. It's possible we could have an economic downturn. In fact, inevitably, at some point, that will happen. What this county has chosen to do, not, you know, us in particular perhaps, but is rely incredibly heavily on sales tax to fund the general fund. Do you have a percentage by chance on that? I mean, it's in the 90s, but I don't know.
Yeah, it's pretty high. I don't know if you recall off the top, we haven't got that far in the budget yet, but quite frankly, you know, we've talked about this, you know, when I presented the budget to you all before, and, and typical best practices, you have a three-legged stool, right? You have property tax, you have sales tax, and then you have fees and operational. And so you can help balance when one of those revenue streams, for whatever reason, has, is an impact. We are significantly reliant on sales tax.
Yes, thank you. So, so, you know, it, it's well into the tens of millions what the, what the total general fund revenue will be in 2024, and we're talking about one and a half million from property tax. So obviously, it's a very, this, this stool is, is off, is off balance in that regard. It sort of is what it is. You know, it's where we find ourselves. I'm not proposing, you know, some big property tax increase to, to try and rebalance things. But I will observe a couple of things. One, I agree that a balance in a hypothetical, you know, best, good government situation is optimal. Two, if we do experience a downturn, real estate values are unlikely to be significantly impacted by that. Sales tax revenues are guaranteed to be heavily impacted by that. And given that we rely almost entirely, our general fund, on sales taxes, should there be an economic downturn, you know, it's going to bring up some hurt to, to the, to the budget. And some of the things that we're hoping to pay for would be a struggle to pay for. In the grand scheme, this is a pretty small percentage of the general fund. And it would be my really strong recommendation that we don't do anything to lower it beyond where we've already lowered it. Commissioner Johnson asked a minute ago, you know, the amount per household. I mean, if you just look at the numbers, it's 199 increase versus a 71 increase with the 8% cut. You know, it's 128,000. We've got a quarter million people. It's 50 cents a person. I mean, it's, it's 50 cents a person. So we can either prioritize salaries, law enforcement, roads and bridges, highways, or we can do a 50-cent tax cut. My suggestion is that, is that we do the former. I just think it's... I just think it's the, the smart choice, given these options. And frankly, I think when it comes to the road and bridge fund, I, you know, I'm not going to propose it tonight, but I think at some point, we ought to have the conversation of sending that to the ballot and asking the voters if they would contribute more to the road and bridge fund. Because I think that's a vital service that county residents might be willing to, to pay for, and that would help generate a little more revenue for that function. But yeah, I feel pretty strongly, y'all, that, that we ought to, we ought to leave it where it's at. I agree, we don't need to raise it. But, yep, I think we should leave it.
So your thought is the current mill rate?
Yes.
Very good. Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, Commissioner. I am, so, a lot of feedback here. Definitely not for increasing our mill rate moving forward. I see that there is a very nominal impact by reducing it, but I, I don't feel right about keeping it at the current rate. I would have to agree with probably Commissioner Withington and dropping it down to negative 12%.
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
The neutral revenue option, please.
Thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson, I don't know if you've weighed in yet, and would you care to?
Yeah, I like the comment. First of all, I agree with Commissioner Carpenter and what he said. It's funny, I've just had some, several conversations with my own son about finances. He's, he's got his first big boy job. He's a firefighter now. And what do you, what do you, where's your income coming from? We talk a lot about diversifying. Diversifying so you have multiple sources of income. We don't do that very well in the county, and as was, was mentioned. We rely basically solely on, on sales tax, which could get us in a bind if things go sideways. Along with Commissioner Withington, I love the idea of being able to give more back to the people, particularly during these times, which is going to help them when they go to the grocery store. But like Commissioner Carpenter said, even if we went neutral revenue, we would be out a lot more money as a county, but we'd be telling everybody, hey, here's an extra buck 50 next year for your groceries. It's like, that's not really going to help anybody. So because our, I understand because of our rates are so low to begin with, that's why reducing them more isn't really going to help anybody, but it will hurt our employees and hurt our services to the county, I think, more. And like I said, I'd love to be able to help the citizens more, but we can't do that here, I don't think. And I don't think, I don't think it'd be worth it. So my opinion would be to say at the current mill rate.
Okay. I think it's a really good discussion we're having here. Obviously, last year, we went below Hancock, which I think was the right thing to do. Clearly, that was what I was, I was voting on. Listening to the conversation, I would prefer to always lower taxes if possible. However, I think the arguments I hear myself in, in terms of the current mill rate are probably the strongest. And one of the things that gives me pause is the fact that we will be, whether we pass something or not, but we are going to be dealing with a possible senior tax freeze next year on, on property taxes. I don't know how that's going to come out. I don't know what the legislature is going to do if they decide to make changes in that law. But I'm kind of inclined to be a little bit more conservative at this point, as far as not lowering it too much until we really get a handle on that. So while we need to, I think, go for the lowest possible tax we can, I think it is prudent to go with the current mill rate myself, because that gives the benefit to our, our constituents, but it also allows us to function, I think, at a rate that will be, that will give us the flexibility we need to deal with the, the possible senior tax freeze, senior property tax freeze. So anyone else wish to comment? Okay, let me see if I've got this. So we have two who are looking at the neutral revenue, one, two, three, four, five, that are looking at the current mill levy. Am I, am I reflecting the, the commission correctly on that? So what you need from us, obviously, we're not taking a vote, because this is for discussion, but what you're looking for is consensus, is would I be accurate in saying, and just again, looking for your head nods or comments are certainly welcome, are we, am I right in that I see the current mill rate as the consensus of the commission? Is that something we can all look forward to looking at next time? Okay. And of course, consensus doesn't mean unanimous necessarily, but I believe, does that give you the instruction that you need?
Yes. So next week's meeting, we'll hold a public hearing, and I'll do very much the, the same, maybe a little bit more reduced. And then the ordinance that will, we will present for you for consideration will have the current mill levy, right? So no increase and no deduction in the current mill levy for your consideration.
Very good.
Based on majority.
Any closing comments before we leave this discussion item? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That brings this, as long as you're up there at the stand. County administrator comments, or if you'd like to do it from your usual place.
So thank you, Commissioners. Just a couple of items. First of all, reminding everyone that this weekend is the Liberty Festival, and also next weekend is the Gladstone Festival, Gladfest, I believe. And so just to let, remind the public, we have kicked off our comprehensive plan. And so we will be at those events with pop-up tents, engaging the public, asking them for their participation, and talking about the comprehensive plan. So we hope everyone can stop by and visit us at the Clay County tent at both of those events, this weekend and next weekend. The second item is certainly want to thank the public and our staff for being very nimble this last week due to unforeseen maintenance issues. Here at the courthouse, we had a quick change of events that happened last Friday, and so the courthouse has not been staffed. This week, we've had staff at the annex. So we've certainly been able to serve the public. With the assessor services, the collector and a recorder, we've been at the annex. And our clerk's office has been down the street at the Quik building, helping individuals to get their notary. And so we've continued to serve the public. We know there's been some inconvenience for individuals that did come to this building and find it closed. We do apologize for that. I think some of the issues we encountered also apparently has had an impact on our microphones for you all tonight, so we'll see if we can't get that resolved. But we do appreciate everybody's understanding and patience with us during that. Certainly want to give a shout out to our staff and our IT department that became very nimble, very quick, and were able last Friday to get things set up so that we were able to provide services beginning Monday morning. At the status right now with regard to Monday and our services, it is still unknown at this point in time. We do believe probably we will still have our employees offsite on Monday. So more information to come if we're, the maintenance will be done and we can open up the building. We'll certainly do that and get the public notification out for that. And then the last item is that the next meeting of the commission will be next Thursday, the 28th, at 6:00 PM here in the chambers.
Very good. Commissioner Johnson, do you have any comments you'd care to make? Commissioner Thompson? Commissioner Carpenter?
Oh, no.
Commissioner Wagner? Commissioner Lawson? Commissioner Withington? Go right ahead.
So I know we've talked about Senate Bill 190. I just wanted to see if there could be a, an update on where we're at on that. I haven't heard anything. I know the working group has met, and also I know that the Missouri Association of Counties sent out a memo of guidance with a sample, oh, sample ordinance or whatever, to all 114 counties. I know that this county has received it, but I don't think the entire commission has been provided that. So whoever received it, I would like, you know, the county commission sets policy, and I think it's in our best interest, I think it's in the county's best interest that every county commissioner has it. So whoever received it on the county's part, I would like to know that it gets sent to every commissioner.
I, I'd just like to add, I've not received it. So if someone from the county's received it, we'll find out who that is and get that shared with everyone.
I don't believe I've seen it either, so, okay.
I wanted to send it to you. Tracy Ball wants to... Send it to me. I wanted to see who, who else had received it, so clearly somebody else has, no one else has. So I'll send it to Diana. Diana can send it to everybody, but...
Okay. Tracy, Tracy's hand, I probably got it, I just haven't looked at it. I haven't seen it yet, so I apologize. Today was the meeting of the Zoo District Taxing Board. It is a district that includes Jackson County and Clay County. The quarterly meeting was today. We participate by virtue of a vote of the people. We send down a certain amount of tax money, and we have a couple of seats on the board. In fact, our, our chairman is a Clay County, a Clay County member, so I'm very happy about that. What came up was that in no small part, due to the popularity of the aquarium, the projections are that we will hit 1 million visitors to the Kansas City Zoo by the end of this year. The last time that that happened was 2016. So we, we seem to be marching forward to having a really great year for the zoo. And there's more talk about other exhibits that would be online. I think one involves giraffes. So it's pretty exciting down there. And I think if anyone here is interested, they should visit the zoo. Our citizens get postcards in the mail, allowing them a free attendance, I believe, quarterly. So certainly, I would encourage any citizens who care to go down and visit the zoo to do so and to take advantage of those, of those postcards. After all, you've paid the taxes, you might as well get the benefits. So, and it is an enjoyable, fun thing. The only other thing I would add is to see the aquarium, I believe because of the demand, there's no extra charge, but you do need to get a reservation so that they can keep the traffic moving through there in a pretty orderly way. So things are going well at the Kansas City Zoo, and Clay County is certainly a contributor to that effort. With that, the only thing left on our agenda is our executive session. I will entertain a motion to go into executive session. Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. I move to go into executive session pursuant to the revised statutes of Missouri, 610.021 sub 12, and to adjourn from there.
Motion has been made for us to go into executive session under Missouri Statute 610.021 parentheses 12 contractual, and to adjourn therefrom discussion. Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington? Commissioner Lawson? Motion passes six zero.